This time we'll call the Tuesday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Stinas and myself, Jack Willie are your supervisors. We have Lisa Smith and Bjorn Depp from the Auditor's Office. Luman Goki, our administrative assistant. And our first item on the agenda today is the opening of the secondary roads rock bid, but I believe supervisor.
I do. I was just looking over the agenda, Jack, Chair, and I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda to have entered Lynn Vokes as completed her session at ten ten. The rest of our agenda is actually work sessions, so David and personnel would be.
So you're moving to amend the agenda to?
We can adjourn after Lynn and then do our work sessions and again our work sessions are open to the public also, but. I don't, that's not really part of our meeting, so I would make that motion to amend it.
I'm second with a motion in a second to amend the agenda to. Work sessions following Lynn Vokes' presentation on mental health. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried. Okay. First item on the agenda is opening of the secondary roads rock bids.
Our annual process where we solicit for purchasing a base number of tons from the area for quarries.
Yes.
So it's just reading the numbers and then we'll review and award on the meeting on February sixth.
So my first bid this morning is from River City Stone. They are bidding seven dollars and five cents per ton for the Bernard and the Ruby quarry. Seven oh five Bernard and Ruby.
And are we using the rest of the quarries from River City David or not?
Apparently they're not getting on them.
Yeah. They never did last year. Go around and crush those quarries.
The next one is from Preston Ready Mix. Preston Ready Mix is for seven dollars per ton for the Elwood Jaeger Johnsons and Grants. The next bid this morning is from Bellevue Sand and Gravel. The Bellevue Quarry is seven dollars per ton. Lamont, seven dollars per ton. Spring Brook, five dollars and fifty cents per ton. Saintenatus Beach and Morehead each seven dollars per ton. The last one is from Wembley Quarries. Six dollars and seven cents per ton for the Yelmer, Preston.
Yelmer.
Yelmer, Preston and Wise. Seven dollars and forty seven cents, seven forty seven for Andrew. Arndsdorf, Bellevue, Decker, Iron Hill, Joinerville, Rowan. And Tees Grove. Seven dollars and ninety seven cents for the Eden Valley. Frost.
Seven ninety seven.
Seven ninety seven for the Eden Valley Frost and McCoker.
The rest of them were all seven ninety, seven forty seven.
Seven forty seven for eight of them, Andrew Arndsdorf, Bellevue, Decker, Iron Hill, Joinerville, Rowan, Tees Grove.
My pencil just wouldn't write that down.
Like everything else.
I guess.
What you hear from some of the western quarries or western counties that have no quarries in their state or in their county?
Yeah.
Ouch. Yes. Yeah, they got a holiday. We're very fortunate in that regard.
So David is like normal, we will come, you will. You'll come back and calculate and come up with his recommendations next week.
February first.
Okay.
And the other item I have is a entrance permit. For Pat Dunn in Richland Township, section three two. Two hundred sixteen street, a class C farm entrance on the north side of the road.
Motion to approve. A motion approved to approve the class C farm entrance permit for Pat Dunn. All those in favor? I have a motion carried.
And that is all I got.
As soon as I get him in the minutes here. Yep.
Do you want to start?
So today. Today I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty two and the January nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Board proceedings as written by Audrey Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper.
A motion in a second to publish the minutes. All those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry.
Last night when I sent you out my agenda, I also included the letter that you know. The bond council engagement agreement. So if you've read through it, I need a motion to approve the chair's signature on the bond council engagement agreement. Not to exceed five point nine general obligation capital loan notes series twenty twenty two A. With others in Cooney P C and Jackson County in conjunction with the issuance of the above referenced issue, which is the bonds.
Motion. I guess I read it, yeah, and I know you had a lot of conversation with them. I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with everything that's happening there.
I am. I work directly with Steve Nettle, the bond attorney when it comes to this. He's been very good assistance and help to me. And this is why we're doing things in order. The next motion is, and we'll talk about that, the post issuance compliance policy. There's a lot of work for that. And that, that agreement does name me as the person to. Be part of the post issuance compliance policy. And again, I'll be working with Steve and Heidi and.
So the email you sent us last night was the same agreement as we had last week that we.
It's a little bit different. Last week's was a little bit different. Yeah, so it's kind of the same, but a little bit different. Yes, yes.
No, but you're comfortable with it. Yeah, I'm, you know, I mean, I can read it, but to understand it all unless you have somebody to ask questions to, like you have.
Yes, I, and I asked plenty.
I would second that motion.
In the motion in a second. Any further discussion? All, all those in favor?
Alright.
Motion carry.
So I also need a motion to approve resolution number eight five nine dash zero one dash two five dash twenty twenty two. Approving the post issuance compliance policy for general obligation capital loan notes series twenty twenty two A. Various requirements apply under the internal revenue code and income tax regulations, the IRS requirements. Including information filing and other requirements related to the issuance of tax exempt obligations. The proper and timely use of bond financed property and arbitrage yield restrictions and rebate requirements. This will be a roll call vote.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. If you want to do the roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Stinas.
Can we have some conversation?
Sure.
Sure. Again, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with, you know, again, there's a lot of stuff going on here. I can see that. When you, when you include the IRS and regulations and.
There is a lot of stuff. If you don't want me to do it, I'm okay.
No, I'm happy to. I'm happy to have you do it.
I'm, I'm more than happy to.
You're the Windcoast. So you're really taking.
I do a significant amount of reading. I think that's, I do, I do very little reading here at the office. I do probably ninety five percent of my reading at home. So from seven till nine is when I do a lot of this reading and trying to make sure that we comply and visiting with our bond counsel and our bond agent, so. But again, I'm okay to pass the baton also.
The, the big deal is, Larry, that if she does go to jail, she won't be here.
Yeah.
We can email her stuff.
With an inmate that has an internet card to herself.
All those in favor.
So roll call votes.
I know that's right. I.
Okay, thank you. And just as you've probably heard me talk in previous meetings. The Auditor's Office, we work all year trying to find election officials to work for us on election day. So today is a national poll worker recruitment day. If anyone would like to be an election official or a poll walker, poll watcher. It would be nice if they would call our office or stop in so we can kind of explain the process and such. Give us a call, six five two three one four four, but it is a national day today where they're looking across the United States for people to work at the polls. So it's kind of an exciting day. We, we get poll workers, they'll email us through various websites and we have received several. So if anybody's interested, give us a call.
Are you looking at any certain area or district or?
The good thing is that, you know, I have somebody that lives by Monmouth that I had drive to Preston. So as long as you're on our list.
You can work in any district. Okay, so just for the public's knowledge and so they know what they're maybe up against. Is there any screening of any kind that goes on or just?
You have to declare either a Democrat or the Republican and stay on that list.
But no background as far as. There'd be some restrictions as to being related to.
You do have that. Yes, we do have that restriction that my sister can't work as an election official when my name is on the ballot as an example. So there are certain restrictions, but for the most part. Yeah. Yeah, so if anybody's interested, give us a call or stop in.
There's no action there.
No action there, and that's all that I have for the board today.
Okay, next item on the agenda is visitors or citizens. Were you interested in addressing the board?
Oh, no, sir, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you though.
Did you want to take care of the post issuance compliance policy for the county? I try, okay?
Pass the buck.
Just took over for mother this morning coming over, is that right?
Yeah. Too cold for her.
Okay, Luann, do you want to come up?
Good morning. We'll start with the calendar. At one o'clock this afternoon, Jack has a conference call having to do with the bonds. Wednesday, January twenty sixth at seven P M is a Jackson County EMS Association meeting in Lamont. Mike usually goes to that, but any of you can go that want to.
And just for information, I do have another commitment. So if anybody would like to go to that, I just normally just. Sit in and on it and listen basically, and if they have any questions related to the county, I try to. Make something up.
They have it at the fire.
At the fire station, yeah, I'd be in Lamont.
And those packets.
And it's interesting there. I, I don't know if you have the agenda or not. I have the email me the agenda.
Yes, the package that they sent. You all have a copy of that either in your binder or on your desk.
So I think, you know, there would be discussing air care and whatnot. I think on this one too. I can't remember.
Information was about. Thursday, January twenty seventh at nine A M is a R P A meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry. At ten o'clock is a Community Solutions of Eastern Iowa meeting, also by Zoom for Jack. And then eleven A M is a one thousand Friends of Iowa Award Ceremony by Zoom for any of you that would like to attend that. Friday, January twenty eighth at seven A M is the McCoker Leadership Team Meeting for Larry. And in addition. To what I'd originally sent out because a nine A M webinar empowering Iowa through childcare, a Zoom meeting in there. It's a forum talking about. Problems we're having with childcare.
And we talked about that last night at our early childhood Iowa meeting. So I will probably be. Listening in on that.
Okay.
I did, yeah, I did forward that information to see about. I didn't see that on the email list, so I, and she was going to try to zoom into that.
It's, it's an issue everywhere at the moment.
Yeah.
Well, we had quite a discussion last night at early childhood Iowa. Most of the boards that I serve on that have anything to do with childcare, there's always lots of talk.
Well, it sounds, I mean, I mean, if you listen to the state of the state, they are going to try to do some incentives, I suppose, but.
Well, at our Human Service Council meeting, we talk about that a lot, and that's one of the things I brought up last night with the why. Talking about salaries for the, the daycare people and all of this stuff, and I keep thinking about all of the millions of dollars the state says they have. For early childhood and childcare. I'm wondering why they haven't been dispersing. The Y said they did get some money. But it wasn't as much as they had, had anticipated. But they said they have a hard time getting people to work because they can't pay even as much as McDonald is paying. And they drive down the street and they see these signs fifteen and seventeen and eighteen dollars an hour and they're at about thirteen and a half. So.
You know, it's, it's one of them. It's a job that's rewarding, of course, in many ways, but again, to, to try to make a living off it is another thing. But I just somehow, I just think we have to incorporate. A certain age, whether it be three, three to five or two to five, whatever it may be. And even infants, if we can, and somehow into the school system and say, we have a place for you, you know. To put, I don't, I don't know. That's, that's the only way I can see a cure in that, that whole thing. I mean, there's so many regulations on these home, home daycares that they can't hardly operate now. They got to have excellent area and they got to have excellent play area and they.
There's a ratio of staff to child.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That gets pretty.
And, and I just see you have to have a bigger, bigger picture and say, you know, we have a room here for the infants and. And we're set up for it. And I just, somehow we have to incorporate into our school system.
And that would work too. I mean, most people will work until four or five o'clock.
Yeah.
So after school, you've got all this, I mean. And it's wonderful. Where they need to be. And if it was at the school, it would be there and it was just, it would just work.
It is wonderful that some of these employers are making the, putting these programs into their package, you know.
Yeah, that's the other.
But again, you got to have room for it. You got to have the personnel and you got to pay for it.
But with this new funding that they got for childcare company, let's say. Imagine the possibilities. They could get a grant to build a childcare for their employees.
And you got to staff.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. And you have to staff them is right.
And along with that comes liability.
Well, with anything, yeah.
So there, you know, there are lots of incentives at the Department of Human Services, but I, I haven't seen much of a benefit yet. And that. That concerns me.
I think some of these childcare centers are, are getting, are they not getting a wage increase though because of it though or?
I thought they were supposed to.
Yeah, I thought I heard that too.
Well, my next Human Service Council meeting, I'm going to bring it up again because I, every time I talk to. Nay, I think I always pronounce her name wrong, but I think it's Jenay. Because she's the one that basically is in charge of the childcare and the early childhood Iowa. And it seems like. Way back when she talked about the millions and millions of dollars the state was getting, well. Where, where's it going? And that's, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. And every week I try to get one. Every month I try to get one. I don't get a whole lot. So.
Don't they talk about this a lot in your workforce meetings as well? Has it completely plays into that as well?
Sure it does. Absolutely. You talked about it last night.
Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February first at nine A M. And immediately after the meeting at eleven o'clock will be the annual meeting of the Green Island Drainage District. Okay. Only, only the business I have today is the reequipment of the A T B committee. And I believe that list is also in your binders. And Steve Tebby told me that everybody's being reappointed that is on the twenty twenty one list is being reappointed for twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Each one? No. Because it's not, because it isn't up to us to appoint them. Oh, I don't know that.
Then ask me.
Before anybody says anything, I will make a motion to reappoint everybody. Mike included.
I would second that.
A motion in a second to reappoint the A T B committee and they are Steve Tebby, Carrie Croker. Scott Gent, Jason Hire, James Johnson, Steve Bradley, Matt Notes, Chris Rolling, Terry Rolling, Don Schlenker. Mike Stinas and Don Yanda. All those in favor? Hi, motion carry.
Alright, thank you.
Next, our head on our agenda is Marty Hootle, Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor, Department of Labor Budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lot of snow.
Where were you at?
Today.
I'm gonna make a hole in the ceiling.
Yeah. I was de-stuffing. And I do, I am doing that. I got the three holes in the hallway for. The cable or the communication cables that they're running. I did finally get the water fixed over the sheriff's office in the sink. Again, I think it is from the work out here. It's something like gold. There's a fitting about this long. It's got a pinhole in it about the size of a pencil lead. And something plugged it. And I wasn't aware that that was in the line. So when I finally had enough of trying everything else, I took them out completely apart. And found it. Now I know that that's there. So we dig there, but I'm almost positive I got the same problem with the shower because it's not running like it should. And I will get at that too.
You did say you put a filter on the, coming in the building.
You, I can't put a filter because they don't make a filter with a two inch.
Waterline?
Right. Accor- according to the people I get my stuff from, I did check on that. I don't know if you can put three, three or four, three quarter ones on it, make a manifold type thing. I don't know.
But what about even just putting like a canister one in, in between, in the line? You know what I mean?
He's trying to get a two inch line though. Most.
It's. What I did is I called. A Y McDonald and I told him I'm looking for a filter, water filter with a two inch. Pipe and he said they don't make such thing. That's what he told me.
I guess the manifold would be the way to go and break it apart and get the.
They put three or four of them. Yeah, because they got to have the water pressure because of the flood, the floodometers here. Otherwise they, they wouldn't work properly. Because they got to have the flow to make them work.
So would it work? Would it help to have a pressure tank right in the building?
That I don't, I'm not.
I do that with my house and the neighbor who's had problems with this too, and we're running off another neighbor as well. So unless you have a pressure tank, when you turn your faucet on, that whole water line from that house, you know, two blocks down has to come to your house. So you put a pressure tank in, it'll fill up the pressure up to the full pressure that you need, say forty pounds or whatever. And then when you turn on your faucet. Faucet, the pressure tank takes it directly to your faucet. So you get that quick reaction.
We don't have a problem with pressure. We just would have a problem. We would be taking it from two inch down. The biggest they make is three quarters. So it would be a water restriction. It would still have the pressure there, but it wouldn't have the flow there. Is the way I, they told me, explained it to me. Okay. So. That's where we're at now. Hopefully, after a while, it all, you know, because we haven't ever had a problem until they did this out here, which is understanding, you know, that it does.
Yeah, they probably broke some things loose in the piping and whatnot.
Yeah, because they changed them.
Yeah, rattling chicken.
We had the problem in the women's restroom here, but we got that fixed and now we have that and we got it fixed. Hopefully it'll, it'll come out of it. So. Under that. Everything's good.
As far as I know. Huh? Everybody's good.
As far as I know. How about you? Is it good for you?
It's all good, yeah. Marty, just going down to your budget, you'll have to, you'll have to have a work session with us or is that scheduled somewhere? Did you ever get your lawnmower, I guess is my question?
But it's in the warehouse and I, I emailed it back and asked where the warehouse was at and he never emailed me back, but it is.
Well, you were at the phone call, whatever warehouse, man, where you go get it.
Well, it's got to be all put together and everything too, you know, like.
Well, yeah, but the, I mean, I said, we want to have this done before July.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we don't want to put it back in next year's budget.
Right, I understand that. I will email him again or call him, yeah. But he did say it was in the warehouse. I, I emailed him about once a month to tell him to give me update.
The warehouse could be in South America.
Well, well, no, because the last time he told me it was on a ship setting out on the West Coast.
It's on dry land.
Yeah, in the warehouse. Because I asked him if it was on the ship that hit the gas line or the oil line. And he never emailed me back on that one either. But anyway. It's, it's got to be somewhere and. No more snow than we've had this year. We haven't had a lot of snow. The other one's working pretty good yet, so. Anything else?
Well, I guess one of the, one of the things we talked about, I noticed in your, in your, in your budget that you gave us. There was like a ninety thousand dollar figure for buildings. Is that for the roof and for some?
Tuck building. Her, changing the, the stone. Few, I went, took Lisa around and showed her what we wanted done or what I would like to have done. And she agreed, so I got that.
We have some bad stones, some crumbling stone, whatever kind of stone we.
The little, the littles under the windows are deteriorating. There's up here. And I, I'm not for sure, but I think it's probably from putting ice melt down. It seems like it's where we put ice melt down is where it's kind of bad. Yeah, and then some of it is for sealing the building to keep it from doing that. They say every five to six years you're supposed to do that, and I think we're right at that from the last time we done it.
And are we going to, before the end of the fiscal year? Get something done with the parking lot or have you allocated funds in next year's budget?
I did that. It's in, it's in next year's budget.
Was it in this year's?
I don't think so.
Do they have room?
We had a look.
Yeah.
Do we know what an estimate is?
Well.
We got an estimate.
I don't know if we did or not. Everything we, everything we've ever had quoted, it, it's six dollars a square foot. So that's what I, that's what I did for, for budgeting purposes on that. And that probably is a little strong because I took it from there clear around over there. And that probably is a little strong because I took it from there clear around over there. So, but it, it, that way we're covered. The roof one. The gentleman never actually come and looked at the roof because he was so busy. So he just didn't, I think that probably is going to be pretty steep. I think we can get it, also what I got is about ten bubbles about this big that I want fixed. I don't want, I don't think we need the whole roof, and again, I'm not a roofer. But I, before I would, you know, I would have him come and look at it, but I couldn't get him here. He said they were just.
What? That was a pretty steep estimate.
Yes, I think that was to do the whole roof with a new layer of the, the silicone on top is what that was. And I don't believe we. Need that, but I had to put it in there just in case, we do need that, because it hasn't been touched. Since about hmm, whenever we got the big hailstorm that year. And that's been twenty five years ago, wasn't it? Yeah, so it hasn't been touched then, I have no noticeable leaks that I. In the building that I'm aware of, so it's still holding good and it's not cracked, it's just bubbling. If it's cracked, then, then we need to do something right away, because the sun will deteriorate styrofoam underneath it, but it's not broke. It's just separated. Okay.
Is that a local company?
No. They're out west, Woodbine, is it?
Could be, yeah, I was.
I, I think it's Woodbine.
Woodbine?
Huh?
Woodbine, Illinois.
Oh, it's in Iowa. I'm not for sure, but it's the ones that, they didn't actually do the roof, but they, they repaired the roof and they did do the roof down at. The county shop.
So doesn't, don't like Gizi or somebody, did you also do them roofs or?
I don't think they do spray foam, they do the, the rubber roof.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's only, far as I, in my research, there's only two, two. Excuse me, triple C and custaphone, they're out of Wisconsin. And I believe custaphone is the one that actually put the roof on here, put the system on the roof.
That sounded up really good then.
What's that?
That sounded up good then.
Yes, yes, and I think it added a real big R value to the building. You know, because it's four inches thick and then it's got a like a, I don't know, it's three sixteenths.
Remembering.
Yeah, that, that protects it from the sun.
Okay, my next question is. I was happy to see that we're utilizing some of the. Chairs from the hospital in our hallway, have we done anything with the lounge?
The couch and I think all that's up in there.
It's, it is in.
I do believe so, yeah.
And the.
Dye's maker is not done yet, I know it's parties.
Yeah.
And the conference table downstairs. It'd be nice to get that put together and chairs around it. So that we.
And that's going in the community room, right?
The big room. The big room, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So.
Yeah.
We have had a conversation about that, have you talked to Marty about that? I mean, as far as mounting the screens and so we can use that room for a zoom and a.
Since we have the two big TVs, we have the sound system.
The one TV that we got from up there does not work, will not work.
One of the big ones?
Yeah, but just, I think the TV, not the.
Not the ones that were in the boardroom.
Right, this is just some TV that we were going to put in the lounge and it does not work, will not work.
We didn't that, so you weren't wasting that.
Well, I don't think I've ever been in there for the last ten years.
Did you toss it out on one of their bridges?
Secondary road love is going around picking that stuff up. For no more than cost, it's not worth it, is it?
Yeah.
The treasurer's office has utilized a lot of the chairs and such, I believe that they maybe went down with Mike, maybe within the last two weeks to get some chairs for their office and such. We did take the wooden benches out of the hallway here, I do see people sitting in the chairs more now, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it's been, it's been a nice change, I'm not, as Marty knows, I'm not a wood bench lover, I believe. I'm not really sure what we're going to do with all the benches that we have, but I think as the court system picks up more. You know, we're going to have to take out some more wooden benches and bring more chairs in, so.
But back in the day, we put them wooden benches in there because. The red ones, we had, there are people coming to be napping in them, so that's why they took them out. Yeah. So, but.
Now, when you talk about treasurer's office getting, did they go down to the. Piece by players building and make out stuff?
Yep, and I know that the recorder's office. Requested a cabinet.
Something tall.
Cabinet, I think, so yes, we're utilizing some of the things that we've received.
We've got quite the selection down there, I don't know if you've ever been in the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is a lot of stuff in that building. What's that?
We helped haul it to the trucks to get it there.
Yeah, yeah, but when it's all in one room, it looks like a lot more.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So put that on your agenda though, sooner than later, we'd like to get that room so we could use it down there for other meetings, even the public health. You know, they could zoom in, I mean, I called in last time, but they're here using that room also, if we could use that.
Last night I know zoning used it and she had it set up. A little different, I don't know, a big table wouldn't, would have been in the way, is the issue, how she had it set up. She kind of had a panel up front with her board and then she was back here in the audience and. So.
We are going to fasten it to the floor like we, we are going to?
Yeah, it's not levelable.
So you want it right in the middle of the room, huh? Okay.
Maybe it's be a certain distance from the front for the conduit and all the stuff.
And you took that measurement? Cause you took that part, didn't you?
Can I, can I suggest that before you fasten it to the floor that we look at it, if you get the table up?
Oh, absolutely.
Why does it have to be fastened?
I didn't. It's heavy enough, it ain't gonna move.
It's not built where you can pick it up.
Right, because it, it's, it looks really heavy duty, but it's not really heavy duty.
Particle board and it's not hard, I mean, it's not like a wooden table, you can pick up hands and right.
You move it too much and you're gonna have, you're gonna have pieces of it. I, I do, the, the only thing maybe we could do is put it on, put it on plywood and bolt it to the plywood, then you can move it all. Or something, you know what I mean?
Oh, that doesn't work if you.
Well, it's still a big enough room that we can do around the outside if we need to do a different type of setup, I mean, if you've been placed that table, what is it, fifteen, sixteen feet long?
At least.
I'd say let's get it together first and see what shape it's in, how's that?
We'll get her up, winter together.
Is this winter in them?
You don't work up a sweat, you can breathe real good, your nose isn't plugged up.
It just runs.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else for Marty? Okay.
If you want me back for my budget, I'll be in the hallway, I'm not gonna cut the holes, but I'm gonna mark them all, okay? Unless you want me making. Have a good one, thank you.
I guess the public hearing for that floodplain management is at ten. So.
Uh, we could still have, do Christina with.
For other item?
Before the public hearing, yeah, yeah.
You want to see if she'd be available, Loya?
Good morning, how'd you like to come down and start before your public hearing? Alright, we're ready for you now. Thanks. On your way.
Might want to give Lynn Bolts. That stuff that we might be ready for. No, that's a ten ten, that's fine, forget it. We'll recess at this time till we're joined by Christina Tranel. We'll reconvene the meeting and we're being joined by Christina Tranel, good morning. So you can head with through your discussions and then we'll have the public hearing at ten o'clock.
Okay, sounds good, so what I am bringing to you is an amendment for the, sorry.
So, just discussion. Let's talk about the, your meeting last night because. The public hearing for the ordinance isn't till ten o'clock.
Okay, sounds good, thank you for, yes. Okay. Um, so last night we held a public hearing for, with a zoning commission. For a request to rezone the Scroose Harbor Inn property that is located at three zero five nine seven four hundred Avenue in Bellevue, Iowa. Um, the owners are Chris and Linda Frank, they, the zoning district is currently, is currently commercial. Since that was a restaurant and they are requesting to rezone it to residential. Which it actually was originally zone residential, was changed to commercial in nineteen seventy nine. And now they want to change it back to our one. Um, because they.
For tax purposes.
It is not, they want to tear down the building, uh, keep the foundation and then rebuild on that same foundation with a, a family building.
Because if it's zone commercial, you can still use it for residential. That's the way I used to understand it.
I.
I think you'd have to have it rezoned, but it's, but you can normally, from an upper classification like commercial, you can already downgrade to residential.
Yeah, it's, um, I would say it's easier to go from commercial to residential in this area than it would be to go from residential to commercial.
Absolutely, okay.
So the zoning commission was in favor of the rezone and they recommended approval. Um, we had, Elizabeth did attend the meeting too, just because there were some concerns and discussion about. Um, the water extension from Bellevue up to this area, and with these lot sizes being smaller than what the. Ordinance allows, um, just because it was planted before the zoning ordinance was adopted. We just had kind of a conversation about lot sizes, setbacks. Yard requirements and then setback requirements for water and septic. And Elizabeth can speak to, to more.
Yeah, so I mean.
You can find out who's there.
Um, so I'm definitely in favor of having this rezone of the residential just because of the well concern there. You know, there's three wells in that area, it's putting a lot of pressure on them, so definitely we wouldn't want somebody to. Put another restaurant in there at this time or do anything like that, so it's probably a better thing that we're doing this. And I know Christine and I are just looking at some of these subdivisions and talking about getting them cleaned up and. Just a little more uniform, so.
Well, they've been working on a new water system up there for probably.
Five years.
At least five, six years, yeah, you know, and I think, like we had talked, I think the money is approved, it's basically getting the. Excusements, residence agreements and the contracts with the landowners to. Get the system and.
Um, it did, this, there was a quest, a request for variance from the Franks that came to my board. Um, a couple of weeks ago and they tabled it because they weren't really sure, I'm not sure if they wanted more information or if they were. Looking to see what, you know, happened with the zoning and the things, but I will take that back to them in March. And just let them know that it was rezoned as residential, if that gets approved and then. Just to move forward with that variance, I did check with the Army Corps of Engineers as well, just because that property. Um, bumps up to the Franks property to make sure that there weren't any issues with requesting any variances and they said that it was fine, so.
They did, okay, because I think if I remember right, the core ground comes up pretty close to that building.
Yeah, it does, yeah, and I also had reached out to them because I was notifying all neighbors within five hundred feet of the property. Um, and so I, I did talk to someone from the Army Corps of Engineers yesterday. Um, they're looking into just some information on. Agreements between property owners, um, between the Franks or previous property owners. Uh, because there is a path that goes across the Army Corps of Engineer land to the river, so they're just kind of checking in on some of that. Um, they did ask me to let them know if they do request a variance to setbacks in the future, they, they'd want to know about that.
There's another issue down there with the trees.
Okay.
Um, maybe just clarify that a little bit.
Okay.
You know, somewhere along in here, there was one, we ended up sharing the cost of conservation, but it was on.
But I think, wasn't that on railroad property up by the, uh, three ninety fifth coming in?
I don't remember where it was.
Couple of years ago, there was an issue with one of the trees that was overhanging the road and it was on railroad property. And a complaint come from a landowner and we said, well, it belongs to the river. So I.
This was with the core.
Yeah, this was.
Of course, well, we're not, we're not cutting down any trees. And it was, I mean, it was a pretty hefty bill, it was like two thousand dollars, I had the tree taken down, but. So I don't know if there's any language in there about that or how that's agreed, we weren't real happy about doing anything about that, I don't know how. I just don't remember how the whole story played out on that, but.
Okay.
Should be some clarification in, that he maintains that.
Yeah, I can talk with conservation and the Army Corps about it.
I, I, it's, my opinion is that that lot is much larger than some of the other lots that are up there. I'd certainly like to see a half million dollar home center that we can draw taxes off of that. This letting it a bear parking lot, but.
Yeah.
So it's nineteen thousand square feet, is that like an acre or?
No, twenty, forty three thousand, six hundred.
A perfect lot would be two hundred and eight by two hundred and eight, that would be an acre.
Oh, okay, thanks. That number was up there, I just couldn't find it.
Yeah. Um, yeah, no, the, the use is less intense, it's going to be less water, there's going to be less traffic. No parking requirement or less parking requirements. Um, and yeah, I think that it would be, it would fit in better with the surrounding area for it to be zone residential.
And what a great view.
Yeah, no kidding.
So what do they pay for that treaty?
I have no idea.
You know, the, the what, what they will?
What, what that sell for, you know?
They, they still own, they own the restaurant.
Only, they're just putting, taking that down.
Yeah.
That restaurant was added only two, five or three or four times. Actually, the walkway used to go down to the dock, so they used to have gas down there.
Yep.
They did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there used to be a dock and gas pumps and whatnot down there.
Been there one time.
The two properties north of it, I think were all part of the original ownership too, and so those are also zone commercials, so. Once the property owners were notified that this was changing zoning, they kind of inquired as to what their zoning was. And will likely apply to rezone to residential as well.
So they still are commercial?
They still are, yeah.
So you're talking lots. Seven and five, is that what you're saying?
Oh, I don't have my lot numbers on here, but the two just north of.
Oh, north.
Yeah. And actually they.
Would you be in the river?
No, the.
There's another building there.
There's, yeah, there's one, it looks, I guess.
The line looks like.
Oh, yeah, I know, there is a cabin.
Yeah, that's a cabin and then there is another structure north of that, um, and that person who actually owns that. Top property also owns part of the road. It's a private road.
And that's the issue with the water line, because there's no easements in there, it's all private roads. And that's where you need to put the water line.
Right, and that was brought up last night, I think, where they weren't sure, one of the property owners north of there wasn't sure if there was an easement or not. And I thought, well, wouldn't you know if you had an easement?
No, a lot of them are, you know, three or four months their visit there a couple of times a year, you know, and things have changed dramatically up there in the last ten.
Yeah.
And but, you know, half of them, most of the time when they were put up, they were just a cabin and a. Weekend resort, but now they're, a lot of them are full time and. Much larger than they used to be.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's what the whole issue was created with the wells and the septics, you know, I mean, there's a few up there in compliance, but.
So only five out of sixty six lots up there need the setback requirements. So everybody else does not, and so in two thousand eighteen, there was a resolution put in place by the Board of Health asking to not put anything, any new septic. Or wells in until the city was able to annex.
Yeah, and it's. The city will never annex that, I don't think. See, that's where the first, the water system was first going to come through the city and they were going to get a million dollars to put this water system in, but. USDA says no, not unless you annex it, if they annex it, they gotta do streets, curb and gutter, sanitary sewer, you know, the whole shit. And that, I don't know, I mean, Spruce Creek, as I argued, is, is a critical part of Bellevue, that it's just his, but. You know, the city don't want all that responsibility or expense, and why would they? You know, the city don't want all that responsibility or expense, you know, why would they?
Right, but they will be getting, they are getting a public water supply.
They are going to supply the water, yeah.
Which would be a big plus.
Yeah.
So can I request that we use that public hearing for this?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so for the rezone, um, we need to have a public hearing, uh, so that. You guys are the final say on the approval or disapproval of the rezone. Um, so we were thinking Tuesday, February fifteenth at ten AM.
Is that your? Proposition?
Yes.
Move to approve. Doesn't public hearing yet. What is the fifteenth on a Tuesday? What time would you like, Jeff? Nine AM?
Is that your second? Okay, we're setting a public hearing for February fifteenth at ten o'clock. All those in favor?
I know.
I wish and carry.
For for the rezone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
I guess that might not be ten o'clock yet.
So if you've got any song or dance that you want to do while we're waiting.
I guess we can talk more about the. This, if you have any questions about.
I I don't have questions about that, but I do have questions about your office.
Oh, okay.
Um, have you and Elizabeth given any more thought to what you want to do?
Um, with the the office space there?
And assistant and I mean, we really haven't talked to you with such a major. Uh, initial request and we have talked about it.
Okay.
But um, I guess we really don't know for sure.
Yeah.
If um. If you think there is a need for some kind of assistance between the two of you. And if there is, obviously, there is a need for additional office space.
Yeah, um, we haven't talked about it too much. I didn't know if it was. Um, something that would be supported or not, so I guess I wasn't really sure.
You didn't know if it was dead in the water?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, um. Yeah, I mean, I guess as it is right now, I wasn't moving to get an assistant just because. Where would we put them? You know, and and how would that make sense for the flow of space and like people coming in and. And interacting and everything, so haven't talked about it too much, but yeah, I'd be happy to. Start thinking more about things and talking with you all about it and Elizabeth too, um. Yeah, I would say I would definitely not turn down an assistant.
Um, if you would talk with Elizabeth and bring us back some more information and what you're thinking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sounds good.
At this time, we'll recess till it's ten o'clock.
Yeah, and we. Yeah, or G S layer with all those.
Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the meeting and then we'll open the public hearing on amendment number. One to ordinance two ninety-six flood plain management.
Okay, uh, so I'm here to um, bring forward an amendment to the floodplain ordinance. Um, there was a section missing that didn't really match up, so there was a designation in the flood maps. That was a shallow flooding overlay district, uh, wasn't written into the uh, flooding ordinance when we updated that, so. The amendment is to include that into the ordinance so that everything is covered and we're compliant with all the FEMA requirements. So, um, I'll just go through this amendment. Whereas a shallow flood zone is shown on the new flood insurance rate maps for Jackson County, but regulation regarding such shallow flood zones isn't simple text. Uh, whereas to be in compliance with the federal Emergency Management Agency regulations, it's qualified for the National Flood Insurance Program. All flood zones in the county needs to be included in the county ordinance and um, the effective date being twenty, January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, now therefore be ordained by the Jackson County Board of Supervisors that chapter two of title. Six of the Jackson County Code of Ordinances, also known as the Jackson County Flood Plain Ordinance. Number two ninety-six shall be amended specifically, the following language shall be added as sections, six dash two dash nine, shallow flooding overlay district. The shall read as follows, permitted uses, all development within the shallow flooding district shall be permitted to the extent that it is not prohibited by any other ordinance. Or underlying underlying zoning district and provided they meet the applicable performance standards of the shallow flooding district. Two performance standards, the performance standards for the shallow flooding district shall be the same as the performance standards for the floodway fringe district with the following exceptions. In shallow flooding areas designated as an A O zone in the flood insurance rate map, the minimum flood proofing flood protection elevation shall be equal to the number of feet. As specified in firm. In shallow flooding areas designated as an A H zone on the flood insurance rate map, the minimum flood proofing or or flood protection elevation shall be equal to the. Elevation as specified on the firm. And in shallow flooding areas designated as either an A H or A O zone. On the flood insurance rate map drainage paths are required around structures on slopes to adequately guide floodwaters around and away from proposed structures. And then it will also renumber uh, following sections. Six dash ten, six dash two dash ten, appointment and duties of the Board of Adjustment. Six dash two dash eleven, non-conforming uses. Six dash two dash twelve penalties for violations and six dash two dash thirteen amendments.
So, um, that just adds that to the original floodplain.
Yes.
And from our conversation is, it's located down by, this portion is located down by Spilla.
Yes.
And it's all watered down.
Yes.
Good explanation why it's floodplain.
I would, is there, have you had any comments from anybody?
No, I haven't.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing. A motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry. Um, so. I guess we need to approve it.
Oh, no, we need to.
What's your, what's your, there are your, your thoughts on the second and third readings?
I would like to wave them.
Oh, that's right. The motion, that. Motion in a second to waive the second and third public hearings. All those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry. Next is discussion or possible action on ordinance number two ninety-six, amendment one flood plain management.
We just did that, correct?
Yes.
We did it opposite of the way, though. I mean, we did it, it wasn't listed here correctly.
You waived the second and third public hearings.
Right.
And approved.
Right.
Amendment one.
That's right.
Okay.
We approved it first and then we waved it.
Close the public hearing.
I did.
Then you waived the second and third, but I don't think you've approved it yet.
No.
Okay.
I don't have a motion for you to approve.
Ordinance two ninety-six.
Dash one.
Dash one, so moved.
Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor?
Alright.
I motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll recess shortly till Lynn's ready and then. This time we're reconvening, we're being joined by Lynn Bolts, Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services.
Good morning. So yesterday, Jack and I were at the monthly Regional Mental Health Governing Board meeting. Just a slight recap of that, um. I guess the, one of the biggest financial pieces is um, David Farmer. Uh, told the board that currently with our rate of expenditures for this fiscal year, we are at an eighty-six percent projected fund balance at the end of the year. We should be at forty. However, um, I guess what really wasn't mentioned much yesterday, Jack, was that. If you remember, the governing board approved some additional expenditures to begin January first. And it will take more than just the month of January, certainly, to get these up and running. Because it does involve hiring staff by various agencies that have been identified to. Um, add some services and some personnel to the region's crisis system, so. It is still quite a lot of money, um, over the forty percent, but. There are also some significant expenditures that we anticipate beginning to see coming out of the monthly expenditures. I would say by the February board meeting, I'm hoping for that, so.
And the forty percent should be in play, are supposed to be in place by July?
June thirtieth of, yeah, at the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. Currently, if you remember, then a year from now, it goes down to twenty percent. And at the end of uh, June of twenty-three and then at June of twenty-four, the way the law currently reads, it's at five percent. That is the piece that everyone is hoping legislators will take a look at.
Five percent will never carry us over.
No, and it would not in any.
I just don't know, understand, I guess, maybe I'm not looking at how this all plays into what they've taken over. Like our first unbalance.
What the state is concerned about is that there are some regions that over the course of regions coming into existence, July first of two thousand fourteen. They've accumulated a lot of money sitting in the fund balance. And they don't feel that that's wise use of property tax dollars to accumulate that, those monies. When there are service needs likely still within that region should be addressed and maybe in some cases. Not even all the required services are fully implemented. Some of those required services that are fully implemented are the more costly ones and the more challenging ones even to put into place and to find a provider willing to do. But I think that was the rationale. Would you agree with that, Jack? It was, they don't want a lot of, they don't want regions sitting on a lot of money in the bank, so to speak.
What I'm saying is like, of course, there's programs we never did put in place, like the adolescent or the child, you know, mental health issues, um, but. With the state taking over the mental health system. Why do we still have a fund balance or why, what, how does this work? Maybe I'm not looking at it.
I don't, um. I guess I'm not sure I'd say the state is taking over the system. The state is taking over the funding of the system. At the present time, there are still fourteen individual mental health regions. Um, all of which are a combination of counties with the exception of Pope County is a standalone region because of their size. All fourteen of those entities are still responsible to make sure that the services that are required in Iowa code are in fact available within that region. Um, what the state is attempting to do, well, they wanted to remove the mental health expenses from local property taxes.
I understand that, but my point is being. If they're going to take it over and we have X amount of fund balance in there now, they're going to draw a red flag and say, well, you don't need that much funding.
Well, yeah, if, if, if you're, we're not down, done, down to the forty percent. Um, they will not allocate funds to us. They, we will use up our reserve. They said submit additional funding to us.
So where's our levy at now? Is it twenty?
Next year, it's starting in Ju- July, there won't be.
Next year going down to zero. There will be no fund ten in any county or any region.
So that brings that bounce down in a hurry, right?
Well, what will happen at the end of, well, even before June thirty, if this will happen. Um, every county in Iowa will need to, or in our region, I'll just talk about our region. Because we still hold money at the individual counties. Um, every county in our region will have to send whatever balance we have remaining in our fund, fund ten account. To the region's fiscal agent, which is Scott County. Um, now I say, I just want to identify that it's Scott County, but that in no way. Is giving Scott County as a county any authority over any of that money. It is still the region money. It's just that the person. Who is processing revenue coming in and and expenses going out will be Scott County.
So why can't we stop our levy now?
Um, incentive file six nineteen, I believe it was, I'd have to double check that number. The code describes how the transition was going to occur from county property tax dollars. To fully being funded by the state. This particular year is a transition year, and so what they said was, the state wasn't ready to fund the system a hundred percent with state dollars. So they created a cap of thirty-eight dollars per person for every region. And within that thirty-eight dollars. Uh, twenty-one dollars, I, again, I didn't look at those numbers before I came. They prescribed. What the amount was going to be that every county would have to levy for their mental health levy for fiscal year twenty-two. And then what the state would um, fill in.
Make up.
To make up the difference to get to the, I believe it's thirty-eight dollars per person.
So the state's. Twenty-one dollars and thirty cents?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's already on your tax.
So it's not, we can't, that's why we can't.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's a way to get that fund bounce.
And there was no way for counties, counties have to levy that.
Right.
According to Iowa law, is how that language was in that summer file.
And we'll still have some money trickling in after July first.
And the discussion is, where does that money go?
Right.
Does it go into each respective county's general fund or does it go then have to be sent by that county to the region? That detail, I think, is still an open conversation. From what I've heard, I haven't heard anything, any.
I believe that's right.
So what you're talking about is like back taxes that would come in.
Yeah, you'll still have.
Love you was there for this purpose, so it probably needs to go there.
Back taxes and if there would be any kind of refund, um, I, it's not likely there would be anything at this point in time, but. Sometimes um, a bill is paid in good faith, but there was no other funding source and then maybe Medicaid kicked in and covered that service or whatever it might be. And then that provider sends a refund check back to the respective county. So. Stay tuned, I guess.
So going to that five percent balance. Would they allotting money like on a monthly basis then instead of every six months?
The way I understand the law to be written now is, um, or the way. Our region has requested, and I believe this is what they're going to state wide, is they're sending payments out quarterly to each region. And the state, I believe, wanted that method of reimbursement to the regions or money to the regions. To come, to be the same for all fourteen regions, not have some that would, they would send a check monthly and some they would check, send a check quarterly and some maybe six months. So right now, at the beginning of every quarter, the state sends money to the regions. And so we've gotten our third installment.
And it just doesn't make sense to, to, to require us to be five percent carryover.
You can't pay your bills.
There's no way in, in the world that we could, could run it.
Quarterly would be twenty-five percent.
Right.
Everything else runs on twenty-five percent reserve, normal. You try to run between twenty, twenty-five percent reserve, so I mean. I don't know why we're reviving the wheel again, I guess, you know.
I think that twenty-five percent figure had been thrown out there. I think Lori mentioned that yesterday. Um, I, there seems to be some sense of optimism that the legislature will address that particular area.
That's what she said yesterday. She thought that that would be dealt with, and I hope it is.
Yeah, yes, and so does the whole state, I believe, I mean.
Well, you gotta start to implement something and then not stay there, you know, I mean. We certainly need to. I know there's new legislation in right now, as far as screening. High school or grade school students. Without parental, parental consent. I read yesterday, sorry, a couple of days ago, and that one of the, one of the bills. Is addressing that. I know there has been some screening being done at local schools, you know, and.
Well, they should involve the parents in that.
I just figured it always was. I, I don't know what that involves.
I had heard something daily about that and whether or not everybody would be screened unless a parent accepts to act out of it.
Oh, yeah, I see.
But I don't know where that's all at. Haven't seen, I haven't read anything in the last few days.
Cause a good screening would include the parents because of. Information from home too, should be put in with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the screening tools were that were being like that. Along that line, in terms of children's services, Christine Radder, the Children's Care Coordinator. Uh, addressed the board briefly yesterday as she does every month and. Um, she mentioned that she continues to work really closely with Erin Rome from A A, Area Education Agency. And I think that's really a good partnership.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I think so. I think Erin is, is very much has the pulse on what is out there, what the needs are, the mental health needs and. Yeah, I think so, I think Erin is, is very much has the pulse on what is out there, what the needs are, the mental health needs and, so I think that's a, certainly a good thing. The two of them seem to work well together.
Came over and talked to me after the meeting last night.
Oh, yeah.
The man gave me an email from him this morning, giving me some information.
Good, yeah, he seemed real responsive, so that's a good thing. There was quite a lot of discussion yesterday. If you remember, I think I did mention in last month that the board had approved giving one-time grant money to three entities that had submitted for peer support programming. M C S A, which is the homeless shelter in drop-in center out of Muscatine, Vera French does similar in Scott County, and then Life Connections out of DeWitt. And two of the contracts for the expenditures of those monies, I believe, have been signed and processed. The third one is with Life Connections and there was a concern raised initially by the Scott County attorney, is my understanding. Regarding, in that case, the request was for an amount of three hundred thousand dollars to go towards the purchase of a home. To replace the current house that Light Connections is using called Rhonda's House, which is located right behind the hospital. And since Rhonda's House opened, that had been a donated property to Life Connections by Genesis. However, Genesis.
Took it back.
Took it back, yeah. They're doing some major construction, they're building a facility down there, and I believe the property is going to become a part of that whole complex. So the question was raised whether or not this type of money being awarded to a peer support program or any program. Because it's public funds would be viewed as a gift or a donation. Which the attorney was concerned is not allowed. So there is some due diligence being done with trying to reach Rob Sands' office and getting an opinion from him. I believe DHS has already reached out to him at the state level, but now it sounds like there may be some other local people reaching out to him, so. We hope the region gets and DHS gets an opinion, this is an idea that DHS was supportive of. And other regions have done similar things, but when it came right down to the details. There were differences, I believe, in the details of how the money was being rewarded, and that's what's attempting to be clarified.
And they are going to submit the information to all of the county attorneys in the, in the regional. So that Sarah will get it, they want them to all give their input as to how they read it and see if, if the Scott County's. County attorney is right that we need to figure out some other way or method. So. And of course, Todd was pretty upset and justifiably, you know, so. He spoke several times on his discomfort with our decision, but we said we had to make sure that it was something we could do. And not have to try to. Give the money back.
Yeah, so at this point, the board had to have scheduled a work session on February fourth. To follow up on what information has been received by Lori and the region. The only other thing I was going to mention was just, I had mentioned, I believe, previously a training group called Solution Point Plus. It's whom some of you saw at Fall School, Jesse and Joe, the two cops from San Antonio. The region has already contracted with them to come and do an evaluation of what the needs are in our five counties for all emergency response people, so. Including law enforcement, but also school resource officers, emergency management, ambulance services, fire departments, those kinds of things. They will be here April twenty-first to the twenty-third, I believe it is. In addition to that, and then they will formulate a recommendation of training and they have quite extensive training and they do crisis intervention training, C I T training with law enforcement. Which seems to be a very favorable training for many law enforcement, but it's quite a commitment, it's forty hours, one week, Monday through Friday, so it's a little bit of a challenge to get. So especially smaller departments to be able to send officers.
So that's available to everybody or you pick out certain people for that?
It's for everybody. Yeah, they will meet with, it's my understanding that they will be evaluating the needs in all five counties and then formulate a recommendation. Of what the need is that's identified and I'm hoping they will also propose some ideas on how to try and offer. The trainings that are needed in a way that would make it most accessible to people. So then in addition to that, Lori talked to the board yesterday about the same group. Solution Point Plus has, has proposed a contract to the statewide C E O organization, of which obviously Lori is a part of. And the board by consensus said, yes, Lori should continue with that discussion with the C E O group as well. And what that would do, that would also offer some training opportunities statewide. Their proposal was specific to nine of these forty-hour, one-week courses scattered throughout the state. And then in addition, they've also created some videos, the, the training is very interactive from what I understand and very locally based. And so they bring in resources from the community to talk about what's available in the community. But they've also created a virtual, twenty virtual packages that, that contain ten videos to train the information. And then anybody who participates in this ritual training is expected to be available for one day of in-person training where they do some of the role playing and some of the local information.
So that if everybody can't travel to where the program is.
Yeah.
I mean.
Right, yes, right.
They could do it at their leisure here in McCoke.
So stay tuned for that, we'll see what that state C E O group does, I have on today, we'll probably move forward with that. This group is already trained a couple of people from Dallas County, one of them goes into the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy and does a portion of the C I T training in the academy, so. So that I would say was about the highlights, did I miss anything?
I'd say.
Okay, any questions?
And we are, you're still trying to figure out a time when we can have our, all of the boards get together to make the transition. And, you know, for the removal of fund ten and sending the balance of our fund ten account into the region. So they're still, they're still now, still concerned about the pandemic and how it's affecting people. Keeps going up and so they didn't set a date, but that is something they want to do before we, before June first.
Well, and the other thing that I forgot, which didn't come up yesterday, I don't think a whole lot, Lori talks about the twenty eighty agreement will need to be amended because of some of these changes. But also, the funding structure, originally she was thinking that the twenty eighty would address the funding aspect of it. She is now giving consideration of whether or not that should be a memorandum of understanding. But nevertheless, there will need to be some kind of formal agreement between the region and each individual county. As far as what expenses will be reimbursed and the method of reimbursement, which I think is pretty much agreed, that also would be quarterly. So at some point, there likely will be a document coming before each county board of supervisors, and that may or may not be before this larger meeting. I don't know, you know, how the timing of all this will play out, some of these things, now that we're approaching the end of January, will have to start being finalized so that there's time to actually. Follow through, so you'll see that coming at some point. Thanks.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, is there any other business today? Any reports on boards?
Executive board meeting for the eyesight, for a meeting on February tenth. It's an open in-person meeting, and I guess you can wear a mask if you want, it's recommended, but let go three out if you don't put that. And what is, and accept it now throughout systems. Sounds like it would be an interesting, I did read an article about this gaslighting thing, you know, that. Is different than what the ads on the radio are saying about how great it is for. The corn industry and everything, the C O two gas.
Yeah.
And they want to do four hundred million dollar pipeline in North Dakota and Illinois, and Illinois to store eight thousand cubic yards or whatever in the ground. Most of it's gone to North Dakota and they're using it for fracking, is what it's for, to pump it down in for oil recovery. And the rest of it, they really don't say what it's going to be used for, they're just trying to figure out a place to store it. And as you read through it, it finally gets down to the. Credits, tax credits, of how much money it costs, and it's like twenty-five dollars per unit, and then it's going to go up to fifty-five dollars per unit. And the more you read about it, it's another government thing that's going to make the handful of people very rich, and it brings up Governor Randstad. Cause he's in on it and his son, who's a lawyer, and helped set all this up. And it just sounds. Typically, C O two gets released in the year, in the process of making alcohol, or they want to capture it and store it. And then use tax dollars to do all this. And, and fracking, and, and a bit, I, I lived in North Dakota for a while on the oil fields. And people are not real happy with that going on because they, they've been shoving water down and they're pushing oil out, and it's just destroyed their whole water system. And water wells and stuff, people turn their faucet on, it's actually explosive gas, they meant fire, I mean, coming out of the ground. And to me, I think we should concentrate on solar and wind power instead of bolstering up the oil companies with it. And using tax dollars to do that, I don't know. There's another website on there, I haven't gone on to just find out, but that's our big discussion thing in Des Moines is on these pipelines. And I know it doesn't affect Jackson County, but it's going through Clinton County and Cedar County and some of the other ones, and they've had a lot of conversation. It's just, it looks like a government handout to do something that really doesn't even be done, if it's such a great field, why do they have to subsidize it so heavily? I mean, that's a lot of money. And just like I'm saying, if they want to use it for fracking, fine, we can use it for that, but we didn't pay for it, why should we subsidize that? My opinion. And I brought, I've got a copy, I forgot to bring, it was in Telegraph Herald, and I started calling, I'll, I'll bring it in and have Lynn send it out to you.
Oh, I get the Telegraph Herald, and so does Mike.
I think it was in Sunday's paper.
Okay.
Lesson.
Okay. Anything else?
No, everybody said the notes from the nine-one-one meeting and we talked about it in the letter.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor?
Right.